Good evening, and good evening residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the September 6, 2017 school board meeting. I would like to start with Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any revisions, Superintendent?
Do not, Chair.
So summary of non-public actions from August 23, 2017. Mr. Burke made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of July 26, 2017. Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried, 201. Ms. McDonald abstaining. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Lauren West as a special education teacher at GMS at a salary of $38,532 for the 2017-2018 year. Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried, 300. The Board made a motion to accept the nomination of Janet Bellhammer as Director of Food Services at a salary of $45,000 for the 2017-2018 school year. Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried, 300. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Carrie Juris as a part-time CHS guidance counselor at a salary of $31,202 for the 2017-2018 year. Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried, 300. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Amy Perkins as a part-time physical education teacher at CHS for a salary of $20,650.50 for the 2017-2018 year. Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried, 300. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to approve the single pay increase for substitute teacher, professionals, and monitors. Mr. Burke, second, motion carried, 300. This evening Derek Barker is not with us, but everyone else is in attendance. So the first is PTO fundraiser, Raise Craze.
Raise Craze, that's me. So one of my other hats that I wear is I'm a fundraising coordinator for the GMS PTO. And one of the reasons that myself and my cohort kind of took on the fundraising is because we wanted to kind of get away from catalog sales. So we think we have found the solution this year, and I wanted to present it to the Board for your approval because it is kind of, it's a new way of raising money for us, and so I wanted to get Board approval for it. So Raise Craze is an online fundraising platform, kind of like a GoFundMe, that kind of a website, but they specialize in fundraising for schools and small groups, or schools, teams, and groups, and nonprofits. And it's based on acts of kindness. So essentially, what our kids would do is, we would send them an email to parents and families, an email invitation to set up their Raise Craze account online. They'd set it up, then they would enter emails of their families and friends and ask for donations to help GMS PTO. And in Thanksgiving for their donations, and gratitude for their donations, the kids pledged to pay it forward by performing acts of kindness. So in their little website, when it pops up, you can say, you know, Johnny has chosen to bring in canned goods for the food drive, he's going to rake his neighbor's yard, he's going to read to his younger brother. So the kids get to go in and pick which acts of kindness they're going to perform. And then by the end of it, you know, we keep track of all the acts of kindness that are performed by all the students and the amounts of money raised, and then we give them rewards based on that. So we thought it was a good blend, it fits in with, you know, our reaching out to the community. So we would do, we would provide some acts of kindness, shorthand for acts of kindness is AOKs, which is very catchy. So we would provide some AOKs school-wide, so like we normally do like a school-wide fund drive, or a food drive. So that would be like a school-wide kind of community initiative that we can do. Then teachers would be able to do class initiatives if they wanted to, like writing letters to veterans, and our Christmas cards to nursing homes. We plan to run it in November, which is kind of a good time to be out and giving back anyway. And then the kids could do their own personal initiatives, like, you know, helping mom with the laundry, and, you know, they can do their own thing, too. And then the incentives would go, we'd have a few whole-school incentives, some class incentives, and some individual incentives, too. Mostly low-cost, donated, or just being creative, like maybe Mr. Thompson would be duct taped to wall, or something like that.
Done that.
Yeah. So that's kind of the gist of it. If you have any questions about the online platform, the security piece of it, they don't give out any emails for third-party marketing or anything like that, nothing is ever shared beyond the Raise Craze platform. They charge a flat fee for each donation, plus a processing fee, because people can pay online, which is actually very helpful. So instead of mailing a check-in, they can actually just click and pay through WePay, which is kind of like a PayPal money transfer platform. And so they get, they take, there's a percentage for each of those, but then they offer that donors can pay to cover those fees. So, you know, if Grandma is feeling extra generous, she can cover that 2.9 percent fee, and the GMS PTO ultimately gets to keep about 90 percent of what's donated, which is far better than the 40 percent we were getting from catalog sales.
So what is on the breakdown? $1 for donations under $25, $5 for donations over $25?
Right, that's their keep. And they say that if, at the end of it, if they add all of the fees up per transaction, and it's more than 10 percent, they cap it at 10 percent. So Raise Craze themselves will never keep more than 10 percent. The other 2.9 percent, plus, what is it?
Thirty cents.
Thirty cents goes to the WePay money transfer platform.
Have you had any discussion, any schools have done this in the area?
I haven't. It's kind of a new thing, they've only been in existence for about two years. So, you know, a representative called me, she was a PTO fundraiser for years and years and years, and it was started by a couple of dads who wanted to kind of revolutionize the fundraising that their kids, that their families were doing every year, they got tired of selling stuff, and...
So what's the, you said we now keep 90 percent last time, so what's the break-even point that they have to raise where the money is equal to what it was to the other ones?
Last year, we did a catalog fundraiser, that was usually our biggest fundraiser of the year, and I think we kept, I think we kept $7,000. So whatever the math is for that, but if you, you know, if you figure...
But you don't know how much you actually generated to make that $7,000?
I do, we do have the number somewhere, because all the money comes into GMS PTO, and then we pay, it was Meadow Farms, the catalog company, we give them a check, and then they pay us back for the online, 40, we were keeping 40 percent. So seven, whatever $7,000 is 40 percent of, that's how much we generated. But I, you know, I was kind of thinking about it, and I figured I'd just made around number $10,000. You know, if our families and friends are buying $10,000 worth of stuff, first off, it's probably stuff that they can get cheaper somewhere else, or better quality somewhere else. And they, you know, I lost my train of thought. They're buying our stuff, then the students, the students really don't have much to do with the catalog sales anymore, as you can imagine. You know, it's mostly parents emailing, you know, stuff's done online, the kids don't really have much to do with it. So they, you know, we thought it was important to get them involved in, you know, I'm helping my school by doing this.
Can you just give us like a brief synopsis of what exactly this is, and what, say I'm a kid at GMS now?
Yep, how it'll work.
Yep.
In my mind, my proposal, is that November 1st, actually, we'll be talking to the teachers and everybody, getting all the grown-ups on board first, but, so November 1st, we'll have a kickoff, which will be, in order to avoid having an assembly, which we know teachers are reluctant to give up their instruction time, there's a video, there's a three-minute video at the Raise Craze website that teachers can show to their class during snack time. And then we can talk about, who could you email, who could you, who might want to help our school, and who could you help to pay it forward? How could you thank that person by, but what could you do? So the video kind of encompasses that. Then the only thing that goes home is basically a flyer with a code on it, and your login information, and everything else is done online. So for kids who don't have online access, there is a paper form that you can send home so that they can track it on a piece of paper, and we can enter that in, into the system afterwards. And then for two weeks, I can, the coordinators can track the donations as they come in. If peoples are sending checks into the school with their student, I can enter them online, I can put them into the system to keep track for everybody. And then it would run for two, I think, two and a half weeks, right up till Thanksgiving break, and then we have, you know, we do our rewards, and...
So a child's going to send an email to their family and friends?
Yeah.
Saying what they're going to do?
Right, right. And instead of sounding like, "I'm gonna do good things, so you can give me money," the phrasing that they use is...
Well, that's basically it, though, right? Here's a list of things I'm gonna be doing, so give me money for doing it.
Right, right. Would you like to help our school? And I'll be giving back in return, I'll be paying it forward by doing these things in our community.
Interesting.
Yeah. So, yep.
I'm sorry, I just looked up last year's fundraising.
Oh, good.
I went online. So the total sales was $12,600, and the PTO netted $57.25 from that.
Right. So if, you know, if you figure, you know, we'll have a little bit less, you know, people aren't getting stuff for their donation, it'll be a straight donation, but we'll get a bigger percentage of it.
You get $7,000, then you're break-even.
Yeah.
Because not even, kind of, that's 63 on a buck, so...
We actually had $1,864 in direct donations last year, so people, rather than buying things from the catalog, just wrote a check.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
Just easier.
Oh, and I remember, too, and by donating this way, because they're not getting stuff in return, it's completely tax-deductible, so we can give them our tax ID code, and they can deduct it as charitable giving. So it's kind of another incentive to just do the straight donation.
You mean, another six magazines is not enough?
Are you gonna put it on the Facebook page, GMS?
The GMS, yeah.
All the directions?
Yeah, once it's Board approved.
I'll make a motion to accept the program.
Great.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 400. Good luck.
I'll abstain, I think.
301.
Yeah, thanks. Great.
It'll be interesting.
I'm excited.
Plus, you're not charging to join PTO this year.
That's right. They're gonna make back all that money, too. It's a big year for PTO.
All right, that brings us to correspondence.
Uh, no? I can't get into it, no, I don't think we have any.
I don't think so either. All right, I'll go to Superintendent's comments.
We had a great, I said this last time, we had a great opening of the year, it continues that way. It seems like we're a system that pretty much, when we open the doors up, everybody goes right back to work, and things were going very smoothly. The bus runs this year seem to be smoother than they have in the past year, but their bus company will be coming in to talk to us at our next board meeting, so certainly we will have some questions for the bus company, and hopefully we'll have some observations of some positive things, but we'll see. Other than that, I just think school year's off, great, and we're looking forward to the budget. Cory's been working very hard on getting information together for the system in terms of trends, three-year trends on budget, and getting that out to all the individuals, and all the principals have gotten all of their information, and all of the other directors, and S.A.U. has their information, and we're starting to generate some thoughts about budget. Again, we'll do, it's a modified zero-based budget, in other words, we're going to start with what we need and build a justification for it, and the narratives will all be new and will go forward. So budget seems to be going well, and we'll have more for you on that as we go down the road. So far, so good.
And on here, you got a bullet point for first-day student counts. Have we received the second week numbers yet?
We have not received the second numbers yet. The first-day student count's a notable difference on the first day was the number of kids that we had as, was it registrations versus number of kids that actually showed up. There was quite a few kids that didn't show up in the first day, it could be because they were at, you know, different school, Pinkerton's still on vacation, so the, you know, the October 1 numbers, the numbers I always really look for, for a real year-to-year look, so we're watching that, and we will have those October 1 numbers, and if you want an intermediate number, we certainly could try to pull a number in the middle of the month and see what looks like.
Do you know how those compare to last year's?
I don't have that right in front of me. What I, I will say this, that in talking about it in the office, we were saying that the numbers were on target with what we were anticipating for this year, but I don't want to comment anymore, I'll have a comment for you at the next board meeting.
I just didn't know if they were low last year also, because of starting before Labor Day, then without the increase after Labor Day?
Yeah.
The last year's would give you...
I really don't have that, I'll get that information for you.
Like you said, the October 1 is really the one you're looking at.
I would agree.
All right. Now bring us to Mr. Zbicki for your BA report.
I'll just echo what Jim said, so far, so good with the buses. We've had a couple meetings with representatives from first student, seemed very open to open communication and dealing with some of the issues that we had last year, and just proactively trying to address those things. Like Jim said, they'll be coming in for the next meeting, if anybody has any specific questions or items that you would like them to address, if you want to let Jim or myself know, we'll make sure that they know.
I know the first day, we had a bus that was late at LMS, but I believe it was a new bus driver.
That was, yeah.
Was that the only day, the first day?
First two days, it was a little bit late, pulling around 7:40, but she's been 7:32, 7:30.
Which route is that?
Six.
That's the one where the bus was packed?
Hmm, no. Probably about 80 percent.
So why is it...
It's a new driver, it was a new driver, that's the only... It was a new driver, she had come from Nashua, and just different route, different town, just adjusting. Took a right, turned down Route 3 South. She was...
(laughing).
Other than that, the budget season is open, so we're working towards that, and that's what I have for tonight, unless anyone has any questions for me.
No, not this time. I don't anyway. So that'll bring us to community forum. No-takers? All right. And that'll bring us to the superintendent's search public input, if anyone in the public has any input as far as superintendent's search at this time.
Are you going to get that soon up?
You may, you don't have to.
It's been a long day.
Yeah.
Are there gonna be community members?
There are.
On the board, and parents and teachers, we just haven't decided how that's gonna be dispersed?
Correct.
And how will that be publicized?
It'll be, as far as I know, it's gonna be advertised in the HLN, if anyone has any interest in, we talked about it the last meeting, that we'll have a good cross-section of between teachers, just residents, and I'm not sure what other combination and how we'll go about doing it, as of yet.
High school students on it last time, too.
What's that?
High school students on it last time, too.
Yeah.
Is there a projected time for that committee to meet, so if people are interested, they could keep an eye out, say in November, if that's when you're thinking you're gonna advertise for that?
I would think probably as we get, the end of October, beginning of November is when we'll start formulating it.
Perfect.
We do have a timeline, a tentative timeline, the Board had discussed last summer, and I think the Board is still on the same timeline, I'll check with the Board, and then we could put that on the website, so people could take a look at that, if the Board's still on the same page with the timeline.
Perfect.
I believe Tina mentioned, too, she's gonna put it on Facebook, so we'll put it out there in many different avenues this weekend.
People just know to look, kind of, in that timeframe, perfect.
And we can just put it on each school's page, too.
Weed it out.
Yeah, there you go. I saw Tom was asking for people like to follow him, trying to get his numbers out.
I'm following him, by the way, he doesn't know it.
Yeah.
But I am.
It's called stalking.
He doesn't know it.
My career's is still untouchable.
Yeah.
I don't know what he's doing. Paying him off. I'm trying, he's my idol.
I'm gonna go back to your question, I think in the coming weeks, there'll be more and more information coming out in reference to that, that each of our meetings, as we get closer, right? Because I know that the field out there is pretty slim as far as who's out there for superintendents.
Well, I just think September tends to be a very busy time for parents, community members, everybody's kind of getting back into the swing of things, so if people know that they can kind of forget about it for a month and check back in mid-October, end of October, that's kind of a good thing, do you know what I mean? As opposed to checking all the time.
But I think we're looking, I mean, to formulate before the holidays start rolling in, because again, people start getting busy, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
Once we get the lull from the first few weeks of school, it'll be a little bit easier.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that'll bring us to school board comments. I think the only thing that I'd like to say is that I've heard a lot of positive as far as, not only from the administration teams from the schools, but from different parents, that, I mean, it seems to have gone very smoothly the first week or a week and a half, so, no, a week of school, but it just seems, there've been no big hiccups or anything else, the bus situation seemed to be smoothing out, I mean, I know there's still a few wrinkles here and there, but it was nice to hear that, at least at the middle school right now, we're getting every bus on time after those first couple of days, and it just seemed to have gone very smooth. Like Superintendent said, that, you know, you open up the doors for that first day of school, and things just seem to like to start rolling, and go very smoothly, and I think they have so far, so hopefully it'll just continue. I think it helps, too, like with our principals all having been in this situation now, you know, it's like your second year, and Scott's been around now, and Tom's been around forever, but it just, it makes for a smooth transition, so...
I would also like to give a shout-out to the faculty, all the professional members of the district. I mean, I went in the first day of school, and it was like the faculty, the teachers were right in front of the kids, or working with the kids, or working with groups, but I mean, in a variety of different pedagogical practices, but they were right back at work and doing a nice job, so I want to give a shout-out to the faculty, and thank you very much for getting right back to the job of teaching our children.
All right. Now bring us the approval of minutes from August 23, 2017. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I'm sure they'll accept the minutes from August 23.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, 301. All right, that'll bring us to reports, curriculum report. Nancy Childress, welcome aboard.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Board for giving me the opportunity to work with such a great district, and I see a great potential for the district to be even greater. I'm currently working on reviewing the math curriculum, grades 7 through 12, and I'm also scheduling some open dialogues between the buildings for vertical alignment dialogues that are non-critical but supportive in a positive way, which can lead to a lot more discussions with other topics. I'm also expanding the community involvement with the district, I have some ideas about that, and I was pleased that the freshman seminar took my suggestion to include volunteering at the freshman level in their seminar class, which I thought was nice, instead of waiting for the sophomore year project. There is an update on the ESSA change as far as the HQT requirement. ESSA eliminated the need for teachers to be HQT in order to get Title I funding. Previously, that was the law, the ESSA removed it from NCLB. However, NEA stepped forward and required that all paras still remain to be HQT. So there's a little difference there, but teachers no longer have to, it's, they're giving the local control to the districts to determine what, how qualified their teachers are, and be my recommendation to keep it the same, which would be a bachelor certification and 30 hours in the content area. And there's plenty of documents, if you want to see anything on HQT, the new regulations. And if there's anything that the Board would like me to focus on, I'd be glad to hear any issues or any concerns.
Well, I'm gonna bring up my pet peeve, that's just one, just one, just this time one. So I don't like the sophomore project, I think it's, well, I won't bore you with what I think about it, but I, I think it needs to be looked at with some outside eyes, outside, from not inside the school. It may have been a great idea 17 years ago when they decided to do it, but the conversations that I have had with parents, I have my son as a sophomore this year, so he'll be doing his project, and other parents, we're not doing sophomore, we're not doing projects for the community. We're really just asking kids to do, or find, 40 hours of some activity that some administrator in the school will sign off on that says, somebody did something. I mean, I would challenge the administration at the high school to bring to the Board a list of the last two years of every senior, so every sophomore project that was done.
I think I could get that without too much difficulty.
And I, and then I think the school board would look at that and see that, yeah, there's probably some that impact our community. Most of them are impacting outside of our community. The three or four parents that I talked to over the summer who had freshmen that were going into sophomores, none of them benefited Litchfield. So the whole idea behind this project, our sophomore project, was to impact our community. So now what we're doing is, we have students who are doing community service. My son does community service all the time. I don't think I need my high school to tell me how to direct my son or my daughter's community service activities, and I believe that's what we're doing. We're telling students, really, you're instructing parents, I mean, inevitably, there's one student who's doing a project that's 40 hours. The parent has to stand and go through the same 40-hour project, because the project the student is doing requires adult supervision of your under 18.
But my understanding is a lot of times students will work with a community partner.
Okay. But I'm telling you, this was signed off by an administrator.
Yep.
And that's not how it's being handled.
Oh, I'm listening.
The parent is standing right next to the child doing the same work.
So you're saying you don't want Campbell students to volunteer at the food pantry or the food kitchen in Nashua, which a lot of students do?
I'm saying, I'm saying...
Because it doesn't benefit Litchfield.
I'm saying, I'm saying Litchfield students can volunteer anywhere they want. Campbell High School should not be telling them to volunteer at those locations. Mom and dad should be helping instruct that, because, again, the students aren't, the students are going through it because they can't become juniors. I think if you polled the junior class, and the senior class, on these projects, whether, did you do this, one question, did you do your sophomore project to become a junior, or because you felt it was rewarding?
I bet you'd find mixed results on that, is my thinking on that.
Awesome. And the thing is, John, if I'm not mistaken, the sophomore is gonna be going back to the parent and say, "This one I'm doing for sophomore project." So the parent's aware of what they're doing. I think you're gonna be surprised when he presents that list as far as the amount of students and the amount of volunteerism that's put into it. It's a small town, it's a small community. I see so many kids on a soccer field, on a baseball field, on the foot, on every field, helping the smaller kids, you're talking about paying it forward?
But the assumption you were making is that they wouldn't do the volunteer work.
Some of them may not.
Some may not.
But it's not all volunteer, I mean, it doesn't have to necessarily be that, but if that's their project, I'll use my daughter for an example. She's been donating her time for so many years, she's now in college, and the college she's going to stresses the importance of community involvement, and she's looking forward to continuing to be involved.
I understand, but it doesn't mean, but they're encouraging it, and they want their students to do it, but they don't say you're not gonna graduate, or you're not gonna become a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior. So, you know, everybody has the opportunity to educate their children, and again, I believe that teaching volunteerism, was what this is, is something that can be instructed by the parents. Now, that's just, that's just my belief on this, because again, I've asked for seven years, or on my eighth year, to see what the projects have been, okay? projects have been, okay? So the previous administrations were never able to provide the school board with a list of projects that were done. Maybe you'll be different, Bill, maybe you'll be able to find the magic key to mine.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Shannon, I'll talk to Bayard, and I'll get, I don't know if I'll get all of them for you, but I'll get some, I'll get representative examples.
Well, there are only 100 kids, it should be easy. I mean, there, there should have been 100 sheets or more signed and, and, okay, so I'm not looking for the individual sheets.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for a list where it can be identified to anybody.
Sure.
Yep.
So I'd say we just hold off any more conversation, let Bill, at the next meeting, bring, or the next meeting he's at, bring us a listing of what they're doing, and so if it means rewording or, you know, changing description of what that sophomore project is, maybe that's what we can look at.
Yeah.
But I think that the sophomores and going to seniors do a great deal of work and some great work.
I don't, and, and I'm not denying them. I mean, I, I, there's probably great kids in the elementary school and great kids in the elementary school that volunteer right now and do great work. But we don't tell our second graders they can't become third graders, and we don't tell our sixth graders they can't become seventh graders if they don't go out and do some community work in, in the community. Yet, we tell our high school students who, academically, that's what's most important. Now, in certain colleges, and as they apply to colleges, they need to have community services because those are the things that they're going to be told by their guidance counselors and things like that, that get them into colleges they want, that's what, that's what colleges look for. So that's on the student. And we've decided to make it our, our issue, so we, you know, we control the direction of, of our, of our sophomore students to complete their projects. And again, I, it, again, I'm not begrudging or even trying to minimize the amount of great work the sophomore students are going to do. I'm just saying that it's, it's not something that should be being directed from the school or the school board.
I have an opinion on that, but I'll hold on that.
You can beat me up later.
I'll hold on that.
So we'll have Bill supply us with the information, then we can go from there. Allow the description of what the sophomore project is, what the expectation is.
Yeah, yeah, no question.
Yep.
All right. Well, that'll bring us to the principal's report, and we'll stop with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I, by chance, I do have the September 5th, which is, when was that? Monday?
Yeah.
Update on enrollment, yep. So I can tell you that we actually came up a bit from the absentee rate on the first day. So we currently have 39 pre-K, 53 kindergarten, 67 stayed the same in grade one, 86 in grade two, 91 and 87, for a total of 423 in the school. So we have enough teachers, but no extra teachers. So the question that came up last year about having a fourth grade one teacher, at 67, we would have been over our 20 per class, and so at either 22 or 23. So I appreciate that decision, and I think it was a good decision, so, thank you. I just, I'm going to just touch on a few things in this report because I know you've had it to read. Is that still the wish of the board?
Yes.
Yes, okay. A shout out to the SAU for a great opening event. I can't not say something about that. The staff was very appreciative, and it was really fun, I think, for everybody, so thank you to the SAU. I also want to acknowledge staff members who worked over the summer in two ways. They staffed our summer program. We combined the special ed extended school year program, our reading academy, and Title I math support into a single unified program. We had a lot of staff members, and I appreciate their being there. The, the sessions continued till August 10th, so it was a pretty short summer because we went so late into the school year. I also want to acknowledge the emergency management team. They stepped up and did FEMA trainings online over the summer. We've been reviewing our emergency operation plans in each building, and I had a number of staff members who did the three-hour online trainings followed by a test. So I feel we're in a much better place than we were last year with that. Also, over the summer, fourth grade team and the unified arts team came in and did curriculum work. I've put a description in my written report, but I just want to acknowledge them for coming in and doing that. And the big excitement in the building, including today at the faculty meeting, thanks to the PTO for their donation of $4,999, and the district for their support of $1 to buy the two new water bottle filling units. That's so exciting for people because our kids can remain hydrated without having to bring in plastic bottles, so that was a big thing. It was mentioned that the schools looked good and they were, there were a lot of improvements done over the summer at GMS. The biggest one was by far the replacement of a big section of flooring, which also required abatement, so that section of the building was closed off. It's the long hallway that begins at room 16 and goes down to the first, second grade wing. So that was a big job, and it came out well. Instructional highlights, we were very excited at GMS today that our teachers all received their Chromebooks, for which we're very appreciative. And Jason Pelletier and Brendan Kane and did a very short training with our staff because the staff really knows what to do with them. We had eight members, I wrote seven, but one was late in reporting, who attended the Google Summit, 10 others have done a Google training or similar workshop previously, and two have used Google Classroom, but without the benefit of training. So that's a big percentage of our staff who are pretty familiar with it, and they knew just what they were going to do. We also have a second Chromebook lab in addition to our laptop cart, so we have more and more technology coming in, and teachers are using it, so thank you for that. We have 62 students in grades one through five who attended our summer program for either reading or math. There were others who came in only for speech or OT or something like that, but I didn't include them in the number because I didn't have a report for them. The good news is, because we do before and after data to see that the program is valuable, and with the single exception of one group, that's all the grades and all the categories of data, in that one group, 23% maintained their skill in reading comprehension, but in all of the other measures, between 62 and 100% of the students either maintained or improved the skills they measured from the beginning of summer to the end, which puts us in, them in much better position for the fall. I've updated our Twitter list. We have 27 active accounts representing 32 staff members, this is at the end of my report. We're not close to Mr. Perez, and I know that, so I don't, I don't compete with him anymore. So I mentioned the emergency operations plans. I just want to reiterate that we all worked on those. We also met with the Litchfield Police, Fire, and Rescue, and Code Enforcement, and Health Officers, and then they had to be sent to the DOE on, by September 1st. I do want to give a shout out to Maury Clinton-Jones, who started on July 1st, and in our first day on the job, I said, "How much work have you done with emergency operations plans?" So she spent a lot of this summer just making updates, and the state sent us a template that was quite lengthy, making our current plan fit into the template, and I just, I really appreciated the work she did. The last thing on that page is simply that the PTO had their second annual boo-hoo-yahoo breakfast to greet new parents to the district who were either upset having to drop off their children or not upset having to drop off their, whichever, they can choose. The last thing I want to mention, well, two things. So our guidance department has set up a whole year of trainings or classroom lessons around the district-wide goal of having, helping children to become more resilient and to be managers of their own learning. I think those are the twin goals. So I listed all of the things and the choice sentences that they did, but the themes for the year will be optimistic thinking, goal-directed behavior, social awareness, self-awareness, relationship skills, decision-making, self-management, and personal responsibility, personal responsibility. And toward that end, we had an opening assembly on the 30th, and we had to try to capture the theme optimistic thinking. So we read and acted out, it was kind of a hoot, I think the kids enjoyed it, the little train that could, and you'll remember that from when you had young children, and that is, "I think I can, I think I can." So I got to be the clown that kept seeing the new train, and Mrs. Clinton-Jones got to be the narrator. I gave her a choice. She said she would rather not be the clown. The last thing is our parent back-to-school nights are next week, on the 13th for grades K1 and 2, and on the 14th for pre-K 3 and 4. And they're both from six to seven. I would also mention, in case parents are watching, every year at the end of that event, we do volunteer training for any parents who would like to become new volunteers. The thing I'm going to stress, and we'll send a blackboard to remind them, is that new volunteers have to do all of the paper training in advance online and bring it to the training. In the past, they could just sign the paperwork at the event. That's no longer the case. There are six forms that they need to fill out, so that's it.
Can I ask a question, Maran?
You may.
The, the, the classroom visits that Guidance does at, at GMS, I, I think this is fantastic. And I think Jocelyn does a really great job. You know, my, my, my kids have come home talking about what they, you know, what they did with Mrs. Robinson last year with the DOT and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Do the other two schools have opportunities to, to reach, like, to teach these kinds of things beyond just what they get incidentally in the classroom? Like, does Guidance go in and do classroom visits? They do?
Yes, they do, yeah. Depending on the, the classroom, the circumstances. Typically, it's about course selection processes and school processes and those types of school, those types of programs.
I know, it's a different kind of, you know, high schoolers are very, have different needs than the elementary school kids.
So at the middle school, we, we do a couple of things, a couple of ways. So first of all, yes, guidance counselors do go in, they do classroom guidance. Through our PBIS program, we do rollouts with the kids, so the guidance counselors are very involved in that. That may or may not involve classroom time. We try to not impact the instructional day as much as possible. We might do that through enrichment block, we might do that, do an assembly much like what Scott was talking about, something at a certain point in the day. We use lunchtimes, the counselors sometimes come in and, and they'll, will do something there. As part of my report, I'm going to talk a little bit about PBIS this year and something we're doing, but Guidance is very involved in that. And then also, through classes like health class, fax class, she does a lot with goal-setting and things like that, so a lot of these themes do play out in there, but it's not always the guidance counselor that's doing that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That'll bring us to the middle school, Mr. Leclader.
Okay, so this is going to sound in a lot of ways similar to Scott's report, just in terms of summer projects and things that happen. We're off to a very smooth start. Fifth graders have acclimated very quickly. First day, they go to the CAF, and then we kind of, from there, they're just kind of in the flow of the day, so things are going really well with our fifth graders. All grades have really adapted really well to the beginning of the year, so hats off to everybody. We had a lot of new technology this year. We have a Chromebook lab now at each grade level, and so those are up and running, working really well, and just a lot of, a lot of neat things in the first week. As far as summer programming, we had ESY this summer and a very strong staff. We had 25 students involved in ESY, did really well in the program. And then this year, we were able to include some students that we wouldn't typically include in ESY, so we're really happy with, with the programming. Attendance was good. The challenge at the middle school is attendance usually with, with summer programming, but the attendance was, was strong this year. Thank you to our PTO. They hosted our Welcome Back Breakfast last week. Their first meeting is September 18th, and they will receive the Blue Ribbon Award on October 23rd. Dave Walsh is our PTO president again, gives a lot of time to the district and to the school, so a big thank you to Dave for taking that on. I believe this is his third year as PTO president. Might be four, I'm sure he knows, losing years on his life. Fall sports season, off to a great start. We were a little late in some of our hires this year with soccer, so thank you to Mr. Boski and Mr. LaJoy for stepping in. We're off to a good start with soccer, but games are coming up very soon, so we had to organize very quickly with those, so a big thank you to them for, for getting things rolling quickly and getting the tryout schedules out to parents. It was, it was a little bit of a challenge late in the summer. I wanted to just recognize, I'm skipping a little bit, the Norris Cotton Cancer Center sent me a letter this week acknowledging the Terry Fox Walk that we do, the event that we do in the spring. We raised over $2,500, and we do that in memory of a number of, unfortunately, some staff members and also community members who have lost battles with cancer. So they were mentioned in the letter, it was real nice. And then the Galemy family, if you've been in town a while, they also sent us a thank you. We've been, we send letters to these families each year just to let them know that, you know, we're, we're still doing this, and so a real nice card from them, and I want to thank Kathy Sidlow for coordinating those efforts again this year. We had a number of staff recognized for longevity, the opening. The opening, opening day was, was a neat day. We had the guest speaker on resiliency, and then the cookout, and, and then we're doing some things also. I'm going to skip down to curriculum and instruction and assessment. So this year, as part of our PBIS program, there's a poem that's called Keys to Opportunity. And, without reading you the poem, the theme of it is basically that, that some people, when they, when they come to a locked door, just walk away. Some people, they have a key, they try to open it, but if that doesn't work, then what do they do? And the, the last line of, of it is, a rare few see a closed door, try the knob and it doesn't open, they find a key, if the key doesn't fit, they make a new one, and then be a key maker. So we're going to play off that theme this year with our PBIS program and building resiliency, and the guidance counselor, one of our guidance counselors is the coach of PBIS. We're going to be using keys. If you're familiar with LMS, our currency has been Best Buck for a long time. This year, it's going to be keys, we're taking, we're getting those old-fashioned keys, and that's going to be if a kid is doing, playing into our core values, something positive, they're going to get a key, and, and so it'll, it'll be a theme through the year, again, playing off that resiliency theme. Scott mentioned the emergency operations plan. That was a, a large undertaking this summer. Martha Thayer did a lion's share of that work, not only for our building, but a lot of the annexes, they call them, for the district around different emergency situations and preparedness for that. So a big thank you to, to Martha, and like Scott said, it was a, I believe our, our document was over 200 pages by the time it was finished, so it was, it was a lot of work. The IT department I mentioned, so we have, we have Chromebook labs at each grade level now that, that teachers can, on those grade level teams can use. Additionally, we have two labs in the, in the library, they're laptop labs, so we have a, a real solid base of technology now. We've had training ongoing for a while. We have teachers that are very comfortable now training other teachers, and we've had Level One training, we've had Level Two training. So this summer, we had a number of teachers involved in the Google Summit. It's just really exciting to walk through classrooms on the third day and see kids already engaged in, in this, in this work. And a lot of our curriculum resources have those digital components that enhance their learning, the students' learning, so that's, that's been great, thanks to the IT department on, on getting everything up and running for, for the first day. I want to talk just for a second about learning commons. Last year, we talked, you saw the presentation of- presentation of the librarians. They came in and talked about the transition from the old-school library to a Learning Commons. Amy Prevenzal has been doing a lot of work with Plymouth State University. One of the gurus, I think that was mentioned that night, is Pam Harland. So, she came into our school. She did an audit, basically, of our library, and she gave us a, they gave us a document, actually, Amy, Amy's in program at Plymouth State, with recommendations, how to make that transition to a Learning Commons. And Amy came in this summer and did a lot of work. She made a presentation today to the staff, and if you've had the opportunity, if you haven't had the opportunity, please come in and take a look at our library. But we're slowly, what we're doing right now is trying to transition without spending a lot of money. It's amazing already what we've been able to do, just with not, you know, just really no budgetary impact so far. So, we're trying to make the library more of a 21st-century place for kids to feel, it's not a, "Shh, you can't make any noise." It's really a lot more about collaboration, teamwork, inquiry. We have a maker space now in our library. There's a lot of, she has a green room. She actually cleaned out her office, and now has a green room for videotaping. So, this is changing almost weekly. We couldn't have our staff meeting in the library the first week because it was stuff everywhere. Amy was still up to the, you know, going through and really changing things around. So, we're really excited about that. I will continue to provide some updates on that, but she's really taking the ball and running with that. And it's nice to have the assistance of Plymouth State with that, too, because they're the experts. Pam Harland is--
Excuse me, Tom. Are they only working with the middle school? Is that something they're looking at at the other schools at GMS?
We had a presentation by the librarians last June, I think it was, and the idea was that we were looking at the Library Commons model as a model for district-wide, and clearly the middle school and the librarian at the middle school were the leaders in the charge. But certainly, there has been some progress made at the high school and at GMS, but I think that the middle school clearly is the frontrunner.
So, at this point, I think, you know, Amy being in the program has really been helpful. Amy and I met with Pam and one of the other professors at Plymouth, and went over kind of like a, what is a realistic plan for this that's not going to have huge budgetary impact, so that we can sort of roll this out over time. Eventually, there'll be some impacts, but our furniture is actually pretty adaptable in the library, and we're trying to be creative about, like, putting wheels on. One of the big things is just that it can move around. So, you can put wheels on a table pretty easily without a huge impact. So, there's things like that we're looking at. Amy's very creative with things, too, so she's, so let's keep you updated on where that goes. But Amy also, by the way, teaches a fifth-grade library class every day, so she's been able to really roll this out with the fifth graders and get them accustomed to the look and kind of where things are.
That's awesome.
Is she going to be putting anything in for the budget for next year?
So, there will be impacts over time. Some of the things is, some of the furniture that they recommend is pretty expensive. So, yeah, there will be, but I think really what we're looking at is, for example, if you've been in our library, we have a lab, it's really, it's the, they're not called desktops. You can't think of what they're, those computers.
Thin clients.
Were they worth thin clients, but now they're just small HPs? Yeah, so, so those are in our library. It looks like a lab. We want to have more of a station feel to it. And a lot of this is modeled after, a lot of the companies now that is against 21st century, is the space is more adaptable, you can move it, and collaborative, and so it's not just students in rows in a lab, it's moving things around. So, in terms of the budget, in fact, it might be some of that kind of stuff, wiring and different things there. I'm sure Jason would love to hear that.
I guess what I'm asking is, does she have a plan that, I mean, she's presenting to you, that you'd like to start purchasing?
Yes, she does. There's the Pie in the Sky Plan, and then there's the, you know--
Down to Earth.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to rephrase my statement, say there's a strategic plan to implement the innovation like we want it.
And we're going off of, I'll tell you, we're going a lot off of the plan that Plymouth State gave us, that Amy worked with them on, so that really is--
So, what is the Pie in the Sky budget?
Well, a lot of it's the furniture. So, when you look at, when you look at these images of different libraries, a lot of them have a European look to them with, it's hard to describe this without showing you, so I can show you some stuff.
Yeah.
But, yeah, some of that stuff--
But they have rolling couches, and here are leather couches that are probably along the same lines.
Yeah, but like, we want to get a 3D printer. That's an example of something. Now, that's something that, yeah, costs a lot of money.
They'll be affordable.
There are creative ways to do that. Amy's working on, they have these websites where people can donate to a cause, and, you know, it's like a crowdsourcing type of thing. So, she's exploring that. Again, she's, she's real good with technology and really good with, just, she's very creative, so I think you'll find some out-of-the-box ways to fund some of this stuff that she's able to. And we have a good connection with Pam, so, more to come. And then, just, I also want to recognize our facility staff, just getting the rooms ready. We had a number of rooms retired this summer, and security is a big, as Scott mentioned, the emergency plan. We have fobs now in the portables. We have exterior cameras around the building. We have exterior speaker, exterior intercom outside. Project, it doesn't work both ways, but you can project, and in the gym. So, we've made a lot of headway on the recommendations that we received from that report, the whole net security report.
Tom, do you have, do kids need to move from classroom to classroom? Do you guys have a bell system in your, we don't have a bell?
No. It's all on the clock. It's all in the time.
So, it's basically somebody's keeping track of time in each classroom?
Yeah, clockwork. It's amazing how fast the kids, and for the most part, kids are pretty close to their, they don't travel too far. Some of the Unified Arts, they have to travel a little more, but. And then, just dates, tomorrow night's our open house, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. We're going to charge for parking this year. That's a new fundraiser we're doing with the PTO. And our first dance is the 22nd.
They can park at GMS and go through the woods for free, though, right?
We rent shuttles from the S schools.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything for Mr. Leclader?
Just, so, I'm not always giving you guys bad news. I don't know if you guys heard, but the state made available a $375,000 grant for qualifying robotic programs, effective yesterday, and you have to apply between September 1st and September 30th. But there's like $1,200 in the middle, in the elementary school available, $1,000 for the program, $250 for, towards stipend, middle schools, $1,500, and $750 on a stipend, and it's $5,000 and $1,500 for a stipend here. So, hopefully, we're putting in some applications, maybe, you know, they're already ahead of it. Sounds like you guys know about it, but they expect it to be--
What were you talking about today?
Yeah, it expects to be matched by businesses, growing that to over a million dollars, so could help alleviate some issues.
Thank you.
Is this great, Tom? There's an eighth-grade dance on--
No, I just--
Oh, okay.
So, Liz, you just walked out of the room, and John just asked a question I thought you would ask, but I figured you were waiting for Bill. He asked if the middle school had a bell system.
Oh.
I'm ready for it. I'm ready for it.
Nothing else from middle school? Then we'll move on to Mr. Larnigan at the high school.
Sure, so I'm just going to say I'm going to be redundant, okay? These two guys led the way. I don't have anything to say.
I missed it.
It was a great start of the school year. Year two, for me, on a personal basis, it was quite smooth. Custodial maintenance did a great job getting the school ready, no question about that. Dave Ross's guys were terrific. In our office, we had two new administrative assistants out of three positions, so we are expecting some hiccups and bumps, and it actually went really well. So, that was an, it was satisfying to me for that to occur. August 28th, we brought in all the students. And the nice thing about the first two days of school is we had all four classes have their class assemblies and get together with Mr. Perez and talk about school expectations, have the class advisors speak, talk about some of the upcoming activities for them during their current school year. So, our bell schedule, whoops, didn't say bells. We didn't have bells on those days. Our schedule was off from what it would, from what it would normally be. Tom mentioned technology. We are in a terrific position, technology. Our teachers got their Chromebooks back in the spring, at the end of the school year, so they had a chance to play with them over the course of the summer. And then, we distributed about 425 over the first two nights of distribution out of 465. Those people who weren't prepared to pay up for the insurance, we had another, probably 15 or 16 of them show up. So, right now, as of yesterday, we had 29 left to give out to students, and there were 14 or 15 of those who were saying, "Oh, I forgot, I forgot again." So, we're going to have probably close to almost 465 Chromebooks given out to students. And Mike Perez did a terrific job with that, along with Brandon and Andrea and Jason. They were just super in getting those things accomplished for us. So, and so, connected to that, I started off, as I do every year, doing some informal walkthroughs with the teachers, and just looking to see, okay, what's going on in the classrooms. And there was some traditional instruction in some classes, but in a lot of classes, I saw students on their Chromebooks, and I saw a student next to them doing things longhand. So, it was a real combination of things occurring there. Having said that, you know, there's some real professional development that has to occur over the course of this year. It began in the summertime, so we had 17 of our teachers who attended the Google Summit. We have a number who are already trained with using Google apps, but this was, this was a good step up for a number of them to get their, to get their feet wet, so to speak. And we've got some teachers who are pretty skilled at that right now. So, PD-wise, looking out over the course of the year, there's no question that our current thinking is to let teachers sort of get working on, with them quarter one, and then do a survey of them to figure out, okay, what's working well, what's not, and then start looking at, okay, what do we need to do? Who are the experts in the building, and how can we get them to do some sharing with their colleagues and do some things like that. So, we're excited about what the opportunities are for that. There's no question at all about that. We had 110 freshmen that we welcomed in this year, so the freshman welcome day was terrific. Sean McDonough, student council, did a great job in inviting those students in and making them feel welcome. We, Mike Perez and I, struggled with the Emergency Operations Plans. That was a significant challenge for us. I'm not going to deny that. But the nice thing about that is provided some fodder for the Safety Committee over the course of the next year to really dig into those plans, sort of figure out how they are going to be, I mean, you have a template from the state, but that template was not very useful in many ways in terms of what we're doing here. But the other piece is, I think it's important to think about, is to collaborate with the other schools, which we did several times here. But I think, and I think Tom and Scott would agree with me, that further collaboration's probably necessary to make sure those plans are district-wide aligned with each other as well. Sports and clubs and activities, we're winning football games and soccer games and things like that, so, and we're also getting kids dinged up with concussions and injuries as well. So, the school year has begun on that note as well.
For fielders.
Yeah, you know, and that's, I think one of the nice things about being in Litchfield here is it's nice to refer back to the protocols that were established by the school board last year in looking at both the return to learn and return to play. And it's still confusing, you know, students ready to learn, and it's okay, but can't be back on the field, or so, you know, merging those, we're getting, we're getting sort of fine-tuned on handling those things. We met today with our Extended Learning Opportunities Committee, and we're finding that we need to sort of do some thinking about ELOs and what they mean at Campbell High School. The state's view of ELOs is that they occur primarily outside of your high school. Many of ours have occurred primarily within the high school. So, the committee met with students today who are proposing their ELOs, approved several of them, and a number of others were looking to go in a little different direction, sophomore projects and senior projects in some of those areas. So, but that's something that this committee, the ELO committee, is actually, over the course of this year, going to look at, look at what we have, look at how it lines with what the state expectations are, and see if we can blend those and merge those in something that fits Litchfield well. We also, at the start of the school year, have had challenging conversations about credit recovery through summer school, or credit and grade recovery through summer school. And I had a number of calls from parents last year about that. We are going to work with our curriculum facilitators and the leadership team to really flesh that out, okay? There is something to be said for recovering your grade as you recover your competencies. However, that's not been our practice, but I think we're going to take a careful look at that and look at what other schools are doing as well in terms of their practice. So, I wanted you to be aware of that. That's been happening here at the start of the school year. I have bells here, but I'm going to skip that till the end. We are continuing the NEASK Self-Study, and those first drafts are in great, great shape. We have one committee that's had a bit of a struggle, but I have a staff member who's going to step in and do some work with that group. And so, connected with that, that's one thing that's important, looking forward for us, is last year, much of our professional development time was related to the NEASK Self-Study. This year, we only need one of our late arrivals and one of our workshop days. Other than that, we can do real professional development at the high school, so it'll be good to see that occurring. We are also looking at our advisories. We have a 22-minute advisory on Wednesdays, and one of the things we'd like to do is capitalize on that more this year in terms of bringing people in to talk to groups of students, or have class meetings, or celebrate. Last year, we celebrated our recycling program during one of those 22-minute advisories, and it was fantastic to see the whole school cheering this, these 20 to 25 students who had done a great job being recognized for their recycling. One of the things that my student council proposed to me last week was to, was to do a fundraising activity at Campbell for the Harvey Flood Victims down in Texas. And so, they were proposing to contact with a school down there to see what kind of support we could give to them. So, they've come up with a number of different ideas. I'm fully supportive of them. They actually reached out to Tom and Scott on this, and they'd like to do something, something across the district. So, I'm hoping that, they asked me today to look in to see what we could find out. So, I'm going to contact the Texas Department of Education and find out if there's a school in need, that's similar size, 1,300 students, you know, maybe a district like that, and maybe we can provide some financial support and do something for them down there. We, one of the things, when I came to Campbell, that I struggled with last year was the bells, and, or lack of bells, I should say. And technically, we have bells on Mondays, but we don't have bells on other days of the week. I wasn't comfortable with that for a variety of different reasons, okay? And Tom, I know in your school, we've got a smooth, rigid, we just under, high school, the kids want to wander. It's a little different. There's supposed to be an advisory. We've got different schedules for every day of the week. So, I proposed at the end of last year, let's look at bells, and there was instantly, some people, "Yay!", and some people, "Ooh!". So, this year, what I'm doing is, the first couple of weeks of school, we are going without bells. However, I have had Dave Ross contact Simplex to program our bells for the varieties of schedules that we have. So, the, I think it's going to be the fourth, fifth, and sixth week of school, we are going to have bells. Yay! And we are, and then, and then after that, after that, I'm going to survey the staff and survey the students, and what do you think? And my sense from an administrative perspective is that without bells, it's just a little bit more chaotic than, and I'm used to structure. I like structure. I like timeframes where you have to be certain places and things like that. And I think students need that in some ways as well. So, we're going to, we're going to go this week, probably next week, so we can get a Monday in with the bells, and then after that, three weeks, three weeks after that with bells, and we're going to see how things go. So, that's my report, and I'm sticking with it.
I can move down.
Your job is done.
Well, you know, I think at the Campbell schedule, there's like a two or three-minute difference every day.
There is.
And the kids don't know it. I was here for three years. I still didn't know it.
I don't.
In my mind, their minds, our minds, that class ends five minutes before, and then you add another four minutes on that they're still sitting, that everyone gets antsy, they're standing by the doors, and when the bell rings, you need to be in your class. End of story.
The challenge--
Sorry, kids, whoever's watching.
The challenge, the challenge with it also is that you have clocks in rooms that get offset from each other in various places around the building. If they're not reset every Friday, you have to reset it on Friday, okay? Because it takes 24 hours for that bell system to reset. So, if you reset it on a Monday or Tuesday, everything goes haywire everywhere. So, that's sort of a complicating piece to the bell, which is why it would be nice if we had bells-- Which is why it would be nice, if we had bells, children would know when they have to leave the classroom.
When they have to be in that classroom.
Or when they have to be in the next classroom.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Just a couple of things. The emergency operations plan, I have to express my sincere appreciation to the principals and their team for putting that together. That was an awful lot of work, and they did it in a very short timeframe, and very well done. So I really do appreciate that hard work. And please make sure that everybody that was involved in that understands. I do appreciate it a great deal. And then, I think we said congratulations to the administrators, and we said congratulations to the teachers, and I think we thanked the custodians and everything. But there's an event that occurs every day. If it doesn't occur, well, the kids all get really upset with us, and that's called lunch. So I would also like to express my appreciation to all of the folks that work in the lunch foods area for all their hard work. And I know this year is going to offer us some opportunities for growth in the whole food service area. And I'm looking forward to it. And I think that over the course of the year, what you will see is a, I will call it a... An evolutionary, not a revolutionary, change that will be going on, so that by next September, our food service program will be significantly different from where it is this September. And I really look forward to that change, and I look forward to Janet leading us in that change. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and I look forward to the changes that will occur over this year.
Thank you. So can we speak at another time about the SAT and the AP information that CHS has provided us?
Absolutely. Talk about it, if you'd like.
So, looking at the SAT scores, and comparing Campbell High School in years 15 and 14, which is the only ones where we can compare to New Hampshire, we're significantly below the average of the state. In 15, we were 1028, state was 1055. In 2014, we were 1024, the state was 1054. Now, those numbers just reflect math and reading, I believe, not writing.
Yep.
And we don't have information for six... Well, we have information for Campbell High School for 16 and 17. We were 1031 and 1035. But we don't have information for the state on that, on that information.
Yeah, I put this out before Jody had access to that information. So I'm not sure if she sent it to me. Let me take a quick look.
Well, I guess my concern is, we're, you know, we're relevant of what, 16 and 17? We're not even the average in the state of New Hampshire. And I understand we're doing a lot of work and things like that. And I understand that this is the first year that all of our students took the SAT. You can take a look at the numbers where we didn't... All of the students weren't participating, but this was the fir... Last year was the first year where all students participated. And this will be our second year for that. I guess my question is, what is the administration, what does administration focus, focus on improving? Because somewhere along the line, the math and the reading is not getting to a point where the students are either understanding or learning the information enough to be performing high on an SAT exam.
Jody corrected my numbers, and I'm looking at it on my screen here. The 2016, for the state average, she corrected it as 1027 was the total score. And ours was 1031. The writing was 520, ours was 527. And the math was 507 for the state, and we were 505, two points below that. The 2017, we were one point below the state average total score. We were three points below in English, and we were four points above in math.
So maybe we can just get that updated, and we can talk about it again in October?
Absolutely.
And my observation on that was, I think that the curriculum in the high school needs to be revisited. And I think we have to take a look at how the curriculum in the high school aligns with what we consider to be our priorities. And certainly, one of our priorities is getting our children to the very best colleges we can. And so, I think we have to do some analysis in terms of how do we get our curriculum more aligned with the expectations of SATs? Not just SATs, AP exams and other things, so that we give our kids the same chance that they should get at any other good school. And I would agree with you entirely, Chairman, not Chairman, Board Member York, that we're not performing at the level we should be in Campbell High School. And we really do have to put a good focus on that over the next couple of years. I'm kind of excited, on the other side, to see that the trend line, at least for the last two years, seems to be going in the positive direction. So I think there is some positive news here, that the trend line's in the proper direction. However, I do agree 100% with you that we have some significant work to do if we're going to be one of the best high schools in the state. Thank you.
I have a question or comment. Can someone explain to me why there's only 85, 87, 93, and it jumps up to 130? If that's combined, like 2015, 11 and 12, so what does that mean? Just the spring or the fall?
Well, what happened is, the state took on the SAT as the required test two years ago. So if you look at 2016, that was our graduating class this past year, which was a small graduating class, okay? The 2017, that's a much larger group of students, our current group of seniors right now. The years before that, that was not the required test by the state of New Hampshire. So it was combined juniors and seniors who were taking the test, and it was purely optional. I think one of the things that we saw, and I don't have the data here, but the students whose parents paid for them to take the test did significantly better than when you throw the entire class in there and see what the mean scores are. The mean scores are lower when you take the entire class, because you have all groups of students doing that.
I believe that. I agree with that.
Yeah, sure. You're a little more vested when mom and dad are paying out the $80 or whatever it is.
And when the student's paying for the retake.
Yes, right, correct, yeah.
They saw you a little hotter.
Correct, right. So that's the difference in terms of those numbers, juniors, juniors.
That's right, because you did it in the cafeteria, the gymnasium. And everyone did it, I remember.
So on the advanced placement scores, if I read this correctly? In 2017, we had 45 students take AP classes.
Yep.
And they took a total of 81 exams.
Correct.
They only passed 43 exams.
Not passed. It's a score of three or better, depending on college or community. If you get a three or better, it may qualify you for getting college credits for those tests. So, yeah, I don't know what the term "pass" means for an AP exam.
43, meaning it's now college-eligible credits.
Yep, yep.
Which is, I would imagine, one of the reasons why the students are taking it. Maybe not, it's the only reason, maybe it's the classes are more challenging for these students, and that's what they're, that's what they're looking for.
Yep.
I don't, I don't sort of understand the percentage or the next one, other than I think it's a percentage that distracts from... Well, I think it's a percentage that just distracts from what you're looking at here. But only 32 of the 45 students were able to achieve a score of three or higher. And again, my question goes back to the robustness of our curriculum that we're calling AP curriculum, and how it's being taught to the students. I mean, the numbers are pretty consistent across the board. We're not seeing any improvement in our grant. Each year, it's a different set of students. But if you see the same results year after year after year, it's not the students, it has to be at some point in time, it's either the curriculum or the process that they're being taught, or something along those lines, so...
And I think, John, I don't think that's, I think that point is, there's some validity to that. I think also, one of the things you have to do is, and I didn't provide you with this, partly because it has student names on it, but looking at... You can certainly look at specific courses students are taking and their success levels, and correlate to them doing well in a particular class with a particular teacher. And then you can look at others where you have some challenges and struggles, and whether it's a teacher needs to go back to an AP summer course and do some work that way. Part of it, I think you're correct, has to do with specific students. But there's no question, there's some room for analyzing the information and figuring out where we need to do some improvement.
So based on that, I would imagine that you'll be monitoring the administration's work on identifying these areas of concern.
Yep.
You know, we have a class that nobody's being successful in, then somewhere along the line, the curriculum director, principal, superintendent, need to...
Yeah. I might draw our attention again to, if you look at the 14, 15 years, and if you look at that, the percentage of kids with 3+ was 63 to 61.4%. Whereas if you look at the 16, 17 year, the percentage of kids who had 3+ was 76.8 and 71.1%. So again, I want to point out that we're not doing anywhere as near as well as we should. But if that trend line were to continue, then we could be, then we could be okay with where we are. I think there's also a mathematical error here. A number of students with scores 3+, the bold middle, on the 2017, you had 32. But above that, you had 43. And I think the 32 should probably be a 43.
Actually, what happens, though, is you have students taking multiple exams. So they may take the AP Calc and be taking the AP...
But the other, the other three lines are identical. That's the only reason I pointed out to us.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The other three lines are 29, 29, 27, 27, 43, 43. So I don't know, one of those numbers has to be an error.
I'll take a look back at that, yeah, yep.
So, but the hopeful, the hopeful story here is, we're in the right direction. But the answer, John, and Board Chair, is that we certainly have a long way to go.
And if you want to dig down even further on the numbers, take a look at the state average. The state average has gone down for four years, and our four-year average has gone up.
On a trend line basis, absolutely. That's my point.
Yeah.
But again, we have work to do.
Anything else for Mr. Longigan? Then I'll bring us to Superintendent with kindergarten at a glance.
We have spent a significant amount of time working on this kindergarten program in terms of both its educational plan, its facilities, and costing out the kindergarten plan. And I think that, I want to thank Scott and Cory for all their hard work on this. We've also had an opportunity to review some of the work done previously in the district with regards to kindergarten planning, I believe in '08, and again in '10, '11. And I would say this, that for the last seven, eight, nine, 10 years, it has been clear that the district is very much in favor of full-day kindergarten for our children. And the school boards certainly have supported that. And my sense is, the school board fully supports that again this year. And I think the question for us this year is, how do we go about implementing the full-day kindergarten ASAP, meaning next September? And I think the board will have to take a look at the financial implications of implementing full-day kindergarten, as Cory presents them. And then I do have a bit of an addendum to Cory's presentation, as he does the financial piece. And then Scott's educational plan and facilities, and his explanation of that whole area. We certainly want to lead with that, because the educational plan should drive our decision-making. So I just want to turn it over to Scott for a while, and then Cory. And I want to jump in on a few points as they present. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I didn't prepare a PowerPoint or something, it's some future point, we can certainly do that. But I did look online at the Department of Education. As we know, it's well-established that by 2015, 75% of the districts in the state of New Hampshire offered full-day kindergarten in some way. And they've been promoting, but not mandating, this idea for years. And they have multiple support materials online. I just want to read, I thought this was a pretty eloquent statement. This is from the New Hampshire State Board of Education in their June 8, 2011 statement on the importance of early learning. And it's only a few sentences. "The early years of life matter because early experiences affect the architecture of the maturing brain. Children begin learning as soon as they are born, and their brains are built from the bottom up. The benefits of positive early experiences build one on top of another as skill begets skill. Early experiences literally shape how the brain gets built. A strong foundation in the early years increases the probability of positive outcomes. A weak foundation increases the odds of later difficulties. Remedial education, clinical treatment, and other professional interventions are more costly and produce less desirable outcomes than the provision of nurturing, protective relationships, and appropriate learning experiences earlier in life. It is more efficient, both biologically and economically, to get things right the first time than to try to fix them later." I thought that was a great statement from an agency that, you know, it's kind of policy-driven, but I really liked it. We talk a lot in our district about the importance of being competitive in our programming and what we provide our students. And I wanted to mention this finding also from the DOE website. Forty-two states in the District of Columbia have adopted the Common Core standards, expecting kindergarten children to master skills like these. Write numbers 0 through 20. Represent a number of objects with a written numeral. Solve addition and subtraction word problems and add or subtract within 10. For any number from 1 to 9, find the number that makes 10 when added to the given number. I'm going to skip, because I understand that the board is supportive already, but just to kind of make the point. Analyze and compare two- and three-dimensional shapes in different sizes and orientations. Using informal language to describe their similarities, differences, parts, and other attributes. Identify basic similarities and differences between two texts on the same topic. Spell simple words phonetically. Drawing our knowledge of sound letter relationships. Participate in research and writing projects. Write a letter or letter for most consonant and short vowel sounds. And at the end, the point they make is this. In order to master these skills, some children in the US receive 1,080 hours of instruction, and some only 540 hours of instruction, meaning a half-day. In New Hampshire, the reality is that the standard for half-day kindergarten is 450 hours of instruction. So it's two and a half hours a day, which is what we have. When I think of what we need to make our program competitive, not only within New Hampshire, where 75% of the districts offered this, but within the United States, where most states have full-day kindergarten, often mandated, it's, we have a ways to go. The other thing to consider is that everyone benefits from a full-day program. And students benefit, I'm gonna focus on that piece. Parents and teachers also benefit. But students benefit by having a relaxed, unhurried school day with more time for a variety of experiences. More individual and small-group learning and interaction. Early intervention to increase success for all children. Time to explore other subjects to build content foundations, such as science, social studies, art, and health. Those kinds of things are really tough to kind of squeeze in in a half-day program. More time to work on challenging projects and extended learning curriculum. A jumpstart for children of low-income families who cannot afford to send their children to a private full-day program. And social and behavioral benefits, such as a greater sense of conflict resolution and learning how to make friends. Locally, I just want to highlight two things that are coming up as something for us to look at. Last year, our incoming first graders, and I mention this because when I talked about being competitive on a state and national level, when we have our students do the NWA map testing, or they do AmesWeb testing, they're compared against norms established by a national collective of students. And so, our students are being measured against what... And so our students are being measured against what students in a full-day program are able to achieve. And in last year, for reading, only 44 percent, this was somewhat alarming for us, of our students in incoming grade one were at either average, above-average, or high-average or above-average in reading. And for a community that prides itself on educational attainment, that was pretty disturbing. For mathematics, 53 percent of the students in incoming grade one were either at average, above-average, or high-average for math. So the other reason that's really important for us this year is that we'll be required to test, as of this year, with the new law, all incoming kindergarten and first-grade students for showing early signs of being at risk for dyslexia. My big concern, to tell you the truth, is that we're going to have some false positives, because children have different exposure than what the norm group of hundreds of thousands of children have experienced. And I think lack of exposure is a lot different than having a learning disability, but they could pop up as being at risk. So we then have to provide remediation for that, so that's a concern going forward. I wanted to mention those things, just to kind of frame the why of full-day kindergarten, and then I wanted to talk about how to fund it. I think everyone is aware, but in part, I'm sharing this with the public who might be watching, that the kindergarten Keno bill, we currently get a half-day of adequacy aid for every half-day kindergarten student, and that's about $1,800. It's $3,600 and some change for a full day. The bill provides for an additional $1,100 per student for every student enrolled in full-day kindergarten, starting in fiscal year 2019. And so then the bill, as I read it, and I'm neither an attorney nor a business administrator, but in fiscal year 2020, it appears that they're aiming for full funding for a full day, with a guarantee of that additional $1,100, depending on how they do with the gambling. So, well, that is what it says, actually. It says if there's revenue. Is that accurate? Okay. So the one wrinkle that we had to kind of consider in all of this, in projecting, is that the state, while they're encouraging districts to offer full-day kindergarten, they have not changed the requirement of all students between the ages of six and 18 need to attend a full day of school. And so they actually, in the bill, which I provided a copy of, there is a line that all districts that offer full-day kindergarten need to still offer an option for parents for a half-day program. My informal sense is that most parents would welcome a full-day program. We actually lose quite a few students to schools who have a full, or even daycares that have a full-day program, because parents need the day in order to do their job, that kind of thing. So I have not surveyed, I think that would be a good idea, but I have not surveyed the community to know where they stand, or at least the community of school-aged parents. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what we would do for the half-day option, and I sent that to you. It's entitled "The Parent Option for Half-Day." I actually, since I sent it to you, I've been thinking more deeply, trying to come up with it. I initially came up with two possibilities. I envisioned that in a full-day kindergarten program, we would do academics in the morning and do specials in the afternoon. It just seems commonsensical that children are more focused on the hard work of, if you will, of learning to read and write in the morning, than they would have a full 50-minute special, as all the other grades do, in the afternoon. And so I thought, well, what if a lot of parents requested that they go only half-day? I think in that scenario, we could design a section, like we have now, of half-day kindergarten, and they would, then we could schedule in a special for those students. If it were only three or four, my initial response is that we could simply integrate those students into the academic half of the day, but I don't think that that's the right solution, so I apologize, I changed it a little. Because I think it's actually a minimum standard that all students, including those in a half-day kindergarten program, be given physical education and exposure to the arts. So I think that I have to backtrack a little, and say, even if we only had some of the students who did a half-day program, probably the better solution is we'd have to devise a special block just for those students, so in the morning, while they were here. I'd probably still put them in the morning. But I just wanted you to be aware of that we're thinking ahead to what are the possible issues, or not roadblocks, but challenges that we would...
What towns presently offer full-day kindergarten that you go about that actually have part-time students doing kindergarten?
I have no data on that, nor...
I can give you one, because we talked about Derry, I believe it is. I think Derry has both a half-day and a full-day program, and currently, don't quote me on that, but I believe that's accurate, the full-day program is a fee-based program, and I believe that they pay around $34,000, $3500 a year for the second half of the day. And that prompted the question, I'm going to jump in a little bit, amongst the administrators, do we still have the option to charge a fee for full-day programs, given that the state is now funding full-day programs at $1,100, with the intent of funding it at $1,800 for that second half, to make it the full $3,600 that you would get for adequacy aid? And I asked counsel for an opinion on that, and the opinion that we received back was that it would probably not be very favorably met by the courts if the district were to try to charge parents for a full-day program for two reasons. Number one, the state is now supplying money at $1,100 guaranteed, and $1,800 if the Keno revenues come in, in addition to your $1,800. And number two, there are some pretty clear statutes or languages that indicate that if a program is integral to the education of the child, that the program should be provided to all children at no additional cost for that program, so that if we deem kindergarten as full-day and integral to our children's education, that we would have to offer that as a public school system to all of our children at no additional cost. So I think that might answer your question, but I'm not sure.
So I remember when Derry did that. Basically, they just created a full-time kindergarten fee-based program. You know, they became a childcare or whatever, but they just did it in their school. And I believe that's how they, because they offered what the state, they may have to readdress that on that, but I do remember, I remember when we were kicking around...
That's correct.
As a school board back in 2010, 2011, that Derry was one of the ones that, doesn't Derry do full-day kindergarten for their whole town? I mean, they built a whole school for it.
I can't respond to that, but you're accurate that '10, '11, that Litchfield did look at a full-day kindergarten, and did look at a fee-based structure, and they did do a poll of parents, and I think it was like 60 percent of the parents that had kids in not in kindergarten would be willing to pay an additional $3,000, I think it was $3,400 to have their children go to a full-day kindergarten. But I think that conversation is moot at this point. I think today, if we're going forward with a full-day kindergarten, that we would have to find the funding for that, and not be able to charge parents any additional monies.
You couldn't charge them the difference from what the state has given you for a full day?
I don't believe so, because I think then you create a differential among parents that could afford to pay that and parents that couldn't, and I think then you would find that you wouldn't pass the test of equitable treatment of all parents based on income. There's a, I have a legal opinion that says that a lot more eloquently than I've stated it, but essentially, that's what it's stating. Excuse me, Scott.
Oh, that's fine. No, that's great.
I do want to, Scott, I agree with you that we're creating, you know, if it's 450 hours, 445 hours difference in our students coming in from, you know, kindergarten into first grade, you know, mainly what we're going to begin to see as a community, we're going to find people moving in with younger kids are going to, they're going to, we're not going to be as attractive to them without the full-day kindergarten, because of the 450-hour difference that we have. And so, you know, again, I tried to push this very hard, and the school board did very hard. I think at the time, the naysayers screamed a little louder than those of us that wanted to do it, but at the same time, we also didn't have areas where we could actually fit the kids. And I don't know if you solved that problem, I've read through your information, there was a lot of information. But, you know, I think as we go through budget seasons, that this has to be paramount, and the school board just needs to determine how they're going to, are they going to make it part of the budget, or are they going to put it on a warrant article?
I think it's important we're all on the same page. Having kids coming from every different kindergarten preschool program, the burden's on the first-grade teacher to get them all on the same page, and they must spend at least the first three months trying to figure out where each individual child is at. Some kids don't even go to kindergarten, I would think, and I think it's a win-win, personally.
Mr. York's comment about, did we find space for them? That's a great lead-in to this other forum. It's in colors, red and blue, so I should explain that. The question was thrown out as kind of a rhetorical question. What had I done with the classrooms that we had? Because in the last four years prior to this, we had eliminated first, a first grade, then a second, then a third, then a fourth, as the smaller cohorts moved up through. So what I wanted to bring to the board's attention is that, in fact, we have added a lot, and we have squeezed a lot into the school. So beginning in '12, '13, the first thing that happened is in 2012, '13, that was my first year, the summer I came, we took away the portable that had been used the year prior, I think for kindergarten, I think it was a third classroom. And so that was taken away in the summer of '12. I think I said '13, but it was '12. And then that summer, we had to add a first-grade classroom, because our enrollment for grade one had grown unexpectedly to more than 90. I think we had 93. So that was placed into Room Nine. So the next year, we took away the extra classroom, and we eliminated that position and that room. And these are the changes we make. So Room Five used to be a full-size classroom. In around 2009 or '10, I don't know the exact date, part of the room was cut off to make an additional egress out the backside of the building, and so that room is now about 550 or 600 square feet. It is inadequate as a regular-sized classroom, so we lost that classroom. And when I came, it was actually used as a book storage room, and also a staff lunch little area. But we had to make that, as our preschool has grown, into a second instructional space for a small overflow of pre-K with a five-to-seven or so student limit. We also moved the reading specialist out of Room 37, which is about maybe 120-square-foot room with a bathroom in it. It's been a variety of things over the years, but we moved the reading specialist out of there. Room 37 became a place that we could quietly deal with behavioral issues, and then we moved the reading specialist to Room Nine. We added a second Title I math tutor at GMS, and that put us at three reading tutors and one math tutor in one classroom. We replaced a coder, which is an assistant with a part-time OT due to increased caseloads. So now we have two OTs and a PT who all share Room 27, and we began using the OT Room Annex, I call it the ESOL suite, as workspace for computer technician. So that, as we increased computer space, we began using it for that reason. The next year is the year we completed, we added a computer lab. We had never had one since I've been here. We also added a third Title I math tutor to Room 19, making a total of six, and we added a third case manager for the burgeoning special ed population into Room 16. And then the following year, we lost Grade Three in Room 12. We moved Grade Two into Room 12, and we combined Rooms Nine and Ten, both for a special ed resource room and for the reading specialist. Room Eight became a Grade One classroom again. Room 37 is still used for behavior management, but we had no in-district behavior specialist. The tutor lab, we moved to the primary wing in Room 14, still with six tutors, and we moved the last of the third-grade classrooms to the third, fourth-grade wing. We added a music room that year. It's the only classroom in the building that doesn't share a wall with another classroom, so that's in Room 15. And we created a new server room out of part of the space in the computer lab. That was an oversized classroom, actually. And then we began using the OT Room Annex as a space for the new ESOL teacher. Last year, we lost a fourth-grade classroom, so we moved third grade around again to kind of get those tighter, as far as proximity. That's important for indoor recess, because we share three monitors between all the classrooms. We made Room 28 an additional pre-K classroom. We could no longer use Room Five, because we needed to be able to house 15 students in a regular pre-K setting. Even at that, it's actually undersized. The standard for kindergarten and preschool is 1,000 square feet. Our rooms are about 850, but we made it work. And we also need to be near bathrooms for pre-K and K, because we have no classrooms in the building that have an internal bathroom, but for very young children, that's important. And we had a dedicated staff lunch work room, for the first time in anyone's memory. That was Room Five, which is about five, that's the shorter room, 550 square feet. We also added an enrichment teacher desk and a program to the art room, so they shared the room, so both programs ran simultaneously. Getting to this year, we eliminated the music room, and we eliminated the dedicated behavior room. We added Grade Two in what was the music room. We added Grade Three in Room 28, which was used as preschool last year, and we moved them to Room 10. We've moved the developmental delay program and reading shared space, so two teachers with different programs. Now into Rooms Five, the undersized one, and Six. We also moved one special ed teacher out of 16. We're up to four teachers and a tutor, and you can't have four teachers and a tutor giving small-group instruction to students who need focused work effectively in one room. So she's now sharing Rooms Five and Six. We created, we lost the teachers' room again, but I have to provide a lunch space break room. So our copier mailroom is also now the teacher's lounge, if you will, although it's vertical seating, not lounging. And Room 10 is used as a pre-K. It's not with an interior bathroom. Room Nine is used for Grade One, again. Room nine is used for grade one again. The art room now houses the art teacher and class, the music teacher's desk, because she has no room, and the enrichment groups, but not the enrichment tutor's desk. That is in the ESOL space, sharing with the ESOL tutor. And the behavior room will be used as both a behavior room and for small group instruction. So, the answer to your question is, I do not see, foresee space.
It's the long of it.
Yeah.
I thought you got a quick answer out there.
I could have told you the answer.
I'm not, I'm not finding space in the building. And that brings us to the proposed cost.
I can start off, and Scott put it together in this format here, and I provided the numbers related to the, addressing the space need. And, I mean, Scott's more familiar with the staffing needs and the, what would take to, the materials that are in the classroom. We'd probably, we'd be looking at a two-classroom equipped with a restroom that would be put back into the area outside the school where the, the two portables were out front previously. The advantage of that is that a lot of the utilities that ran to those old portables are still underground. They were capped off and they could, they can take out those parts of pavement and re-hook up. So, that being said, a two-classroom portable with a restroom installed, thousand-foot, thousand-square-foot classrooms. On the high end of what the quote was that we got is 43,200 per year. They quoted anywhere between 3,200 a month and 3,600 a month. So, this would be at the high end of that.
Is there a one-time cost to that also?
The one-time cost to deliver it, install it, tie it down and everything is 28,000, so that'd be the one, the one time. Then setup costs, we got quotes from a general contractor to come in and hook up all the utilities, set up the ramps that go on the, on the building ADA compliant. That would be a one-time cost of $47,900. And then, we also looked at what we thought maybe the utility costs were per year. Fortunately, up at LMS, they have a separate electricity bill, so I took what the cost is to send electricity out to those two portables and divided it by two, rounded it up a little bit to adjust, and it came up to about 150 a month for $1,500 per year.
So Cory, the quote you have for the portable classroom, is that a lease?
Yes, I'd be looking to probably do a lease-to-purchase agreement rather than just a straight lease, so we're not paying for the thing. It gives you some flexibility. At the end of five years on that term, could we find a way to get rid of it and maybe address some other needs at that school building? Or, if you do end up having to purchase it, it's yours and you're not paying lease payments for the next, whoever knows.
Lease cost is close to the purchase price, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I think, I, usually when you arrange the lease-to-purchase, you come up with a buyout. It's usually, you pay your five lease payments and then the buyout's usually like a dollar and it's yours. Or, they come and get it and take it.
No one had that contract at LMS though?
What's that?
No one had that contract at LMS?
No, those are, we're continuing to pay for them.
We'll get to that after.
Not only do they not have it, but we won't give it back to them so they can put in new ones. We should just return those.
Well, that's what I want, that's what I want to talk about afterwards. Yeah, we'll talk about that after.
So, do you, do you need two classrooms or four classrooms?
Two.
We would need two, yeah.
Two additional.
We have two.
You have two, so you'll need four.
Correct.
You think you'll only need four. Four gives you 60 students, is that correct?
No, we could have up to 20 per classroom. So, that would house.
But I'm just saying, is that what the average count is for kindergarten, is 20 kids?
Well, right now, it varies. So, three years ago, two, some, two years ago, we had 19 and 20 in the classrooms. But in part, that was because we cut out one section because on August, the first week of August.
My question is, my question is, does 19 and 20 work? Is that too many?
It's a little high, but it is our district policy that for K through three, we can have classes of up to 20. The state standard is 25, so we're already ahead of that.
And we do have additional adults in those rooms, is that correct?
Yes, we have a para, in a classroom, para.
Two in, two adults.
Yeah, in each pre-K and K.
So inevitably, you believe you'd be able to handle 80 students? 80 kindergarten students, full-time?
Yeah. I think that we would.
But it happens when that 81st student walks in.
Then, well, so that's.
Because I mean, you're at, you're at 60. So, you're really, you're not that far off. You're at 60 students.
Yes.
Less than that. We have 29 and 28 this year, so that's 60, 57, okay, 57.
Yeah.
Is that what your count is right now?
Know how many five-year-olds are in the room?
I think it was 57, I put that away, but let me get it.
I'm looking at the reports from the first day, so.
Yeah, we have.
Right, but then he has his numbers afterwards.
Right, so 57 was the first day after people moved and all of that. We're at 53 in kindergarten right now.
Which is higher than last year.
Historically, we have gained, it's really a huge range, but in the last few years, we've averaged around 20 kids, I'd say. I presented that and I will again this year in the budget.
From K to first.
Yeah, from K to one. And so, I think that's kind of the limit, you know? I look at grade one enrollment to judge what, if we were max, if we optimized and maximized K, to say that's probably what it would be. And the projections for K, for grade one are not above 80 for the foreseeable future according to the NESTEK projections. Sorry.
And just, Scott, so you would have a teacher and a teaching para in the classroom? And then, for any of the children that might have exceptionalities, we would also have sped, additional sped personnel in the classroom, would that be correct?
We would. So, I think that, given our current case management pool, if you will, I don't think we would actually need to add a special ed teacher. But, the, the, here's the thing that we have to keep in mind. Right now, if we have, say, four students who require one-on-one pares in the kindergarten, they can be put in two in the morning and two in the afternoon. That's two para positions. If it's a full-day program, that same number of students would require a para in each classroom. So, we don't know.
Additional para.
Yes, these are, those would be special education pares. And it's highly speculative, but we, our best guess is we could do it with two special ed pares, yeah.
But these numbers are all based on the necessities for four classrooms.
Yes, correct.
And it's possible it could just be three.
It's possible, yeah.
And the way that the numbers are driven, unless you, again, you attract from other areas where you're not getting them right now in the kindergarten, because we don't offer a full day.
Yeah, for me, one of the big questions is, what will be actually the impact of the new housing on Page Road? So, we haven't seen that at all yet.
Right.
So, I think it would be interesting when, over the course of this year, as I understand it, we'll begin to see that impact.
Right.
So Cory, do you want to continue with your financial analysis?
So, I mean, that, that being said, in terms of the building, so the ongoing cost would be the utilities and the 43,000 or so for the annual lease payment. The rest of the numbers in terms, Scott, Scott put a lot of the rest of the numbers together in regards to staffing and how to equip those classrooms. And I can allow him to speak to that. I've gone through them and reviewed them and it's solid.
Okay. So, I got the fiscal year 2019 estimate for how we would budget a teacher for that year from Harley in HR Director. And the standard that the district uses for budget purposes are master step seven, salary and benefits, that's where that amount came from. So, for the two additional teachers, for the two additional classrooms, that's what that would be. Classroom para, the salary and benefits total for each para is $20,000, whether it's for a regular ed or special ed para. So, that's where those figures come from. We don't believe, so while we, pares are more student-specific, the OT, PT and speech services would not really increase by going full day. It would just give them more hours to kind of fit it all in, but the need would not increase. So, we don't think that that will increase. Do you want me to talk about instructional technology?
Did you pull these from?
Yes, so, this is an estimate, instructional technology. And as recently as late last week, I did check with Jason. He said, "It's an estimate, but he feels it's pretty reliable." So, for infrastructure, that is fiber to the new portable, a switch, a cabinet, drops and access points, the total for that would, he felt, come to $10,400. In order to equip the classroom with technology compatible with what all the other classrooms now have, we would need a teacher laptop, printer, interactive whiteboard, projectors with cabling and a phone. And for each classroom, that would be $4,100. And then, the student computers, just to have three classroom computers that kids can go on, he estimated to be $600 a computer or $1,800 a room. So, the cost for technology, I actually want to back up. If you look, you'll see the one-time cost, all of those blue figures, those would not be repeated every year. That would be just to get it up and running. And they would become, many of those, an asset to the district. And then, the print and online resources. We currently have long-term contracts for math, reading, social studies programs. So, I contacted our sales reps and say, "What would it cost to add two kindergarten classrooms for the three remaining years of those contracts?" And that's where those figures come from. So, that's for three years. That's again, a one-time cost. But the parts of those that are non-consumable, those would become an asset to the district. And then, math was 3,307. Social studies for kindergarten is 1,119. And then, 650 for the handwriting. And that was a single quote.
For the classroom furnishing, you had taken what it took to equip those classrooms back in 2009 and did an adjustment for CPI, rate of inflation, to come up with that one-time cost to set up those classrooms for $38,916.
So, the state hasn't offered to supply those like they did in 2009, huh?
Yeah. Not holding our breath, folks.
Doing more crayons and glue sticks, that's what I wanted to start.
As I said, they're not mandating this, they're just hopefully.
Suggesting, yeah.
Yeah.
Been a much better solution seven years ago.
Yeah.
And then, you had done a, the calculation on the last page of potential revenue offset based on enrollment and additional monies from the state. That would reduce the, the total cost in the year one, down by $96,000. Anticipated cost for the first year being $359,77, with year one costs, one-time setup cost being 150,000, 151,000.
Half a million.
And I would just add that.
Quarter. Half. Right, 350 and 150.
Total first-year costs. But I would add this, that I think that we, we understand that the district will be doing some reorganizing in this coming year in response to some of the demographic changes that we've seen. And depending on how we choose to look at that opportunity, we, we might be able to offset a quarter million dollars of the cost through some of the changes we would make in instructional assignments for next year. I believe that district-wide, there could be as many as three positions district-wide that we might be able to have to utilize if the board so chose to reassign to a kindergarten level. But that would be something we'd have to talk about in more detail.
But isn't it just, you know, eventually, the pendulum, how it's swinging right now, is going to swing back the other way? So, decisions that we make as a board shouldn't just be, I understand with the, the staffing and stuff.
Right.
But, in reality, we have to solve, we shouldn't solve the problem because all of a sudden, the rooms become available in GMS, because those rooms are not going to become, those rooms are going to, we're going to lose those rooms. You know, right now, we're playing a shell game with rooms in GMS. I mean, you know, just look at the report, you can see, you know, we're, we're moving, you know, we, teachers don't have a place to call home other than their room. And, and stuff like that, so.
Right, I think that, I would absolutely agree with you that from a bricks and mortar and structural perspective, we, we definitely need a building. How we'd utilize it, I'm not sure, but we definitely need a building for our elementary through, it depends on how you decide to utilize it, but we definitely need a brick and mortar building. And that would give us the freedom, not only for giving teachers spaces, but also for some of the, you know, as, as Tom was talking about and as we're talking about systemic change in our model of the library, well, we really need to have a room area that reflects that model and not just try to wedge it into an existing structure. And there are many structures that I think we do a lot of good work with, but I think we ultimately need a new structure somewheres between the pre-K and eighth grade level, depending on how you decide to organize the district. So, I fully agree with that. My point was that I believe that the demographics next year are such that, we've talked about the fact that we do have fewer children and we are going to be able to perhaps reorganize and assign people to the kindergarten program. And it might offset as much as a quarter million dollars of the potential money that we would need next year, which would need you with your, leave you with your first-year startup funding and then another $100,000. And I think we have to look at this very carefully in terms of how we would look for any new monies. We would either have to bundle everything into a bond or put everything into our operational budget, in my initial opinion. Because if you bundled part of it into the bond and part of it into your operational budget and the bond failed, you wouldn't have the money to be able to implement your kindergarten. And conversed, if you bundle it all into your bond and the people don't pass it, no means no. So, it seems to me that it, it would be really worthy of some consideration for us as a organization to look at, how can we get this kindergarten program off the ground for next year in a very positive way at a way that utilizes some existing resources to the, to the maximum mode? And we haven't done any thorough analysis on that yet, but we certainly believe that there could be as much as a quarter million dollars of resources we might be able to use for the kindergarten implementation. But that would be for the board to discuss. I know there are some hurdles there and I'm not naive to them.
Cory, have you looked into getting two trailers?
Two trailers? Not in this context, no. In the context of, I have reviewed the potential of doing something at LMS, so I have seen a four-room unit.
I'm just wondering, like, you know, some of your upfront costs, I would think that if you can do two, it's not going to double as far as your upfront cost on some of these things. It sounds like GMS is going to need room the next year. So, I mean, I just wonder if it's more feasible.
It's definitely something we can look at, to see what a second, run the numbers and see what a second would look like.
And we know what the lease will be, I mean, it's going to be just double, but I mean, I'm just talking about the upfront.
Yeah.
One-time expenditures.
Yeah. Take a look at that.
I mean, from the sounds, I mean, we don't need enough room at GMS as it is.
Yeah.
Or Mrs. LaBelle, like, finally after like, you know, X amount of years, got herself a music room and, oh.
See, Scott gave me the tour down there and I, I saw firsthand his, the sheet in action of describing where everything is. It, it was a bit eye-opening.
It's tight, very tight down there. As much as I hate portables, can't afford to build a building.
Depends on the building.
It's going to cost you one half a million.
When is that building committee getting back together and?
That was a question I had for John afterwards.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, I don't know if he knows.
Is that?
This would be definitely a good subject to.
Yeah.
We have no, nothing on the agenda because the school board hasn't given us any direction.
Oh, I got direction. I'll give you direction.
I think you'll get some direction, John.
All right, I think this is going to be a monthly discussion for the next five months, twice a month discussion, kindergarten be on the agenda so that we can discuss this in bits and pieces.
We really have to firm this up if we're implementing next year, because it has to reflect itself somehow in our budget or in our bond. So I would think that it's a front-end, front-end loaded discussion that we have to make decision on, certainly by Novemberish, because we've got to get it into the budget.
I think we should bring it back at our next meeting.
I think so.
Hopefully everyone will be here and we can have some, you know, further discussion after we digest the numbers and the thought process on it.
Oh, forgive me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The question was raised whether we include this in our operating budget. That's a question that we've been talking about, because my operating budget that I have to submit is due on two weeks from Friday. So I, I, Mrs. Leary and I were talking about, do we include any of this? I said, "My sense is that probably not at this point, because it's highly speculative." So I just wanted to confirm that.
Several placeholder in there for it.
Yeah, okay. A dollar.
We know what that represents.
Okay.
Half a million.
No, I, I think that, I think it should be part of the budget, Jim. I mean, I, I, why, why kick the can? I mean, if you get the budget, you see what LMS wants, you see what CHS wants, and then you begin to make those decisions on that. I mean, I don't think you can tell CHS not to include that. We're going to, i- i- if we're going to have the discussion and we want to continue in a positive discussion, then I believe it should be part of its budget if we're, because we can always remove it. I mean, that's, you know, through our process. But I would imagine to have the most accurate numbers and have the due diligence be done by Scott and his team with Corey, that it should be, my personal view, it should be part of the budget, and then we can decide from there. I don't think a dollar or a whole.
No, just saying that. But at the same time, maybe at our next meeting, that the superintendent might have a little bit more firmed up as far as this thought process, where we can save that quarter million dollars. And like I said, we'll have a full board and definitely have a little bit more of a discussion on it. That's a big step.
I would just say that I've, I've stated for three years that I think that the best money we spend is on early childhood interventions in pre-K, K-1, 2, 3. I think that if we get a full-day kindergarten, it might cost us a little bit more money upfront, but I think it will definitely help our children in progressing through school, and I think it will help us in terms of keeping kids in the core educational process, as not to the exceptionality educational process. And so I do think that there are some really positive benefits all the way around, and certainly I believe it's appropriate in the operational budget, but it will mean that we'll have to take a look at things and make some tough decisions.
I won't speak for the board, but I'm pretty certain that most of these board members, the board members are in favor of full-day kindergarten. It's just a matter of, again, I won't speak for the board, but the big thing is just how do you pay for it and what process do you go through?
You know, we can figure out, you know, how to do it, and instead of it being, you know, a half a million dollars, we have teachers and positions moving around, we end up where it's actually only increasing the budget, $150,000, $175,000 or $200,000. That gets a whole lot further in, in the correct process that makes the voters much more easier. So that, I would, I would imagine that that's something that you guys would spend the next two weeks looking at, at least.
Well, we've already had conversations along those lines, Corey, myself and Scott, and Corey, myself more specifically, because it's systemic, it's not just GMS. And certainly, we would look at that as the most favorable way to go, absolutely.
So we'll make sure it's on our agenda for next meeting.
Hey, Brian, just to, just to mention, I did receive a quote for a four-classroom unit equipped with bathrooms from the same company that was quoting this, two-classroom unit. That would be about $68,000 per year with $22,000 cost of initial setup. And then probably the cost of the contract would probably be right in line, I would assume. It's the same hookup, same.
Right.
Type of model.
So there's a considerable savings to go with two instead of one.
It, it could be, and it's, and it's one, it would be one building with four classrooms, and it's, it's different. So you enter from one side, it's a hallway with four classrooms, and then the restrooms are out in the hallway, they're not in the classroom.
If you can see what you can do about getting numbers, what the difference would be from going from two to four.
Yeah.
And maybe for us for our next meeting, so at least we'll have a little bit more information.
Absolutely. I don't know if anybody else has any experiences with a four-plex classroom, but there, it's a significant improvement in terms of the educational setting over the duplex classroom. It's like a small building, it's, it's a much, much better educational setting.
I visited one, a couple weeks ago, I visited one up in Goffstown that they had just.
Scabby or something?
Yeah. And it's a, it's a completely different feel.
Yeah.
Was that for GMS or LMS?
What's that?
About four.
Well, I mean, in this context, we'd be looking at GMS, but I was looking at it in the context of maybe eventually looking at something for LMS.
Would you guys still have bathrooms there?
Has anybody, I mean, I'm sure you've given this some thought, but is there a reason that it's, the kindergarten would be in the portables as opposed to another grade, or, you know, having the media center out in the portables, or, you know, like?
Well, it's just that, I mean, if you get four classrooms, then your flexibility is, is out.
Right, right, but I feel like we're concentrating on the kindergarten being out there. You know, if we can't, can we move somebody else out there to get the kids in the building?
The room needs a bathroom.
We did have that discussion, I'd asked Scott to maybe.
I'm trying to remember, we did talk about that.
One of the, with the, with the kindergarten classrooms, as I recall, Scott, as you had mentioned earlier, 1,000 square feet is the recommended state average. And also, the other integral piece is to make sure the bathrooms are either within the classrooms, because the, you know, the kindergarten first-grade kids really, those bathrooms in the classrooms are really important for them to just, you know, go to the bathroom. I don't know how you say that any other way.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, because I was in on that 2009 study, that the bathroom also has to be visible.
Oh, one is like for teachers.
It can't be like around the corner down the hall, so, so the, it's either a teacher or an aide has to be standing at the doorway watching.
And we don't have any rooms in the building?
We do not.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I forgot those things. I actually met with the pre-K K-team for our monthly meeting today. And we were talking very specifically about the bathrooms, I told them about this proposal. And they pointed out that in first-grade classrooms, Mrs. Adamakis used to teach first grade, she said, "It was always like an event. The kids had to leave the room, go to the bathroom just to see it." She said in the kindergarten, because they're right there, it's like a non-event. They, for the first couple days, they wanted to look at the tiny toilets, because.
Very tiny.
I don't know if you haven't seen them, we have toilets that are about this size. I'm not kidding. With full-size plumbing, so they can be changed out. But I think that it's just because, you know, the kids are so very young, it's really great to have the bathroom readily accessible, the teachers can monitor, as you pointed out, and it's right there, so.
The other, the other real limiting piece is even if we wanted to combine some classrooms and get 1,000 square feet, it's a slab structure. So as a slab structure, to do any kind of construction, you're going to have to drill through the slab, and it really would be very, very expensive undertaking to do that. So I, I don't think it makes much sense for us to try to put a kindergarten group inside the building. I think the, the portable four-plex would be the best solution, but a duplex certainly works. Not the best solution, the best solution would probably be, without question, a brick and mortar addition. That's the best solution, because then you could add the addition for pre-K kindergarten or however we wanted to use it, and then use rooms internally in a much more appropriate way.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions for anyone? Questions on the mail list?
Questions on the mail list? Did you sign that?
No, I didn't want to be weird.
So, so any questions? All right, that'll bring us to public input.
Do have public input. Very. Robin Corbio, Forney Smith Court, just talking as a parent about the sophomore project. I just want you to take into consideration and thought that it's not just about serving the community. I think it's about the process that students go through when they are searching out those opportunities. For my son, when he did his sophomore project, he was not staying in Litchfield at the time, he was up north, so he had to search out a restore store that was opening in the community, and he helped out, but he had to go in, he had to introduce himself. He had to set up hours that he could do that. He had to show up on time for that. He got, he ended up getting a letter of recommendation from that organization. He also got involved with a organization that dealt with aiding homeless veterans. And again, that one, he had to make phone calls, see if they would accept his help, kind of fit into those, into those pockets. And the last was a domestic abuse organization up there. So he got an opportunity to experience all of the things that go along with setting up that community service. Now, it would be nice if it was in Litchfield, but I also think that Litchfield is a small community. We don't have a lot of organizations that are right here. I don't know if the high school, when my son and daughter were doing it, we never had the need or knew of a list, if there was a list that would encourage students to maybe seek out, and not guaranteed. Make them make the phone call, set up the interview, sit down with someone, because I think that that process really helps them when they get to college and even getting jobs outside of high school. My daughter did a more traditional, she volunteered through the athletic program at CHS, but her volunteering through the cheer camp and the responsibility that she had and the things that she did as a part of that, she was able to put on a resume where she got a job when she was 16, being a gymnastics instructor. So again, that process of having to do that was really beneficial for her. So take into consideration when you're thinking about that sophomore project, sophomores, they're not quite old enough to really work yet, but yet they're old enough to really offer something to the community and start to hone those, those skills that we can try to recreate in the classroom, but I don't think it's the same for interviewing, making those phone calls, doing that kind of stuff. So that was one thought I had on that. Since I'm on high school. The kindergarten program, and I don't even know if this is possible, but an exploratory about possibly moving the pre-K to the high school and creating a family consumer science program so that we don't have to outsource kids to another opportunity who are interested in teaching or early childhood development. If you could get those two classrooms freed up at GMS by moving those students here, you could, one, get the older students involved and maybe make a little bit of room. And your population is slightly declining, so there might be a space. And I, again, I don't know about construction and all those things, whether that will play into it. Oh, again, high school, I'm going to help you. AP exam numbers. Please also look into dual enrollment, because I have two very different children, and a lot of your classes now that are AP also offer dual enrollment at the same time. So one example would be your AP stats, when my son went through, he automatically knew he had the credit. So going into that AP exam, going after that three, I'm not saying he wasn't as aggressive as he would have been if he didn't have that credit to fall back on. So I think that, I don't know if it's a good or bad thing that we offer that, but I think that that could play into those numbers a little bit, it's kind of like that SAT score, you know, if they go, "But I've already paid, I've got it through SNU, yeah, I'm going to go, I'm going to try as hard as I can," but there isn't as much online, so that may be a drop in some of those numbers is that AP score, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public input? Hearing none, thank you very much. So I think the only thing we have left is to approve the minutes from 8:23, non-public. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
There you go. Motion to adjourn.
So made.
So made. Second?
Second.
Adjourned or go to non-public?
On the face of it.